Ubusutter.live's local government live streams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske truck rentals. Details at plumaslakeselfstorage.com. Skip's Marysville Music Cafe with lessons in person and personalized, instruments including guitars and amps, horns, strings, strings for instruments, and a myriad of music and sound equipment. Skip's Marysville Music Cafe.
All right, I want to welcome everyone to our October 11th, 2:00 PM special study session. Members of the public will be allowed to address the board with respect to the items listed on the agenda only. The law requires that business is not, business not appearing on the agenda may not be discussed at a special meeting. If you wish to speak on any item appearing on the agenda, please fill out a speaker card noting the number of agenda item about which you wish to speak and present it to the board clerk. Can you get a roll call, please?
Supervisor McKelley?
Here.
Supervisor Ziegemeyer?
Yes.
Supervisor Baines?
Present.
Supervisor Conant?
Present.
All right, we are going to open up the study session.
Study session and presentation regarding the Sacramento Area Council of Governments 2024 blueprint project.
All right. I do have one public comment, but I'm assuming, would you like to speak afterwards? Yes.
Okay. Good afternoon, Chair, members of the, of the board and everyone who's here. My name is Casey LaZon, and I'm the Deputy Executive Director at the Sacramento Area Council of Governments. Thank you so much for having us here today to talk with you about an upcoming project that we will be looking forward to engaging with you on and with the community in Sutter County on, and I'm here to talk about that. That's our blueprint. But first, just to give a little orientation, the Sacramento Area Council of Governments is a council of governments of the 22 cities and six counties in the Sacramento region. It's the only place in the Sacramento region where every city and county has a representative from their board or council that comes together at least twice a month around a table to discuss regional issues, to plan, to invest in the future of the region. So we are, it's for the staff who work there, we are really partners with your staff and your local government. We really appreciate that partnership and we really value getting to play the staff role to you at the Council of Governments. And Director Baines is your representative at SACOG, both on the Land Use and Natural Resources Committee and the full board. So what we are here today to talk about, SACOG does regional planning, regional transportation, land use, housing planning, air quality and climate planning, and how all those things mix together. The plan that we are about to kick off, and the original blueprint that was a voluntary bottoms-up regional planning process that the region and all of the cities and counties in the region took on about 20 years ago. So we are renaming this blueprint, that's what I'm here to talk about. The blueprint is, it's a long-range transportation plan, as I said. There are a couple reasons why we do this, and we update it every four years. One is because we're required to under federal and state law. Any transportation project that wants to seek federal or state funding has to be in this plan. But two, it's the right thing to do. There are cities and counties all in the region, you all have your local general plans and your visions for what you want your communities to be. And we know that people live their lives crossing jurisdictional boundaries, you know, businesses cross. And so at the end of the day, this is an opportunity for cities and counties to coordinate together to figure out how to strategically develop out all of those plans so that the people and the businesses of this region can have the best chance of prospering. So that's why it's a good thing to do. Here's a couple things that it is and isn't. So this long-range plan, our blueprint, it is, it's not a stapling exercise, and it's not a wish list. So we don't go to every city and county and say, hey, what kind of projects do you want to put in here? And we'll just put it all together and send it off to the federal government and say, that's what it is. It's not that. It is a strategic and financially constrained plan. And one way to think about it, I'm going to skip to this part here, one way to think about it is if you have a house and your house gets a leak in the roof, and you need to repair that roof, and at the same time, you need to build a new room for grandma, you have a budget that you have to work within, and you know that you have to handle all of these things at once. So you've got to figure out how are you going to do all of that to get yourself the whole house that you need within the budget you have. So if we think of that, that's, that's what the blueprint is. It's 22 cities and six counties, and all of our transit agencies working together to do that. What I want to do, go back and rebuild that house, is go back to this slide to say, the SACOG board has just kicked off the development of this blueprint, and one thing that they set from the outset is they want this plan to be grounded in the triple bottom line. So that means that they want to have the discussions and the strategies that we develop for the plan to achieve goals, equal goals of equity, economy, and environment. So we're trying to see how can we plan for the growth that's going to come to the region in a way that, in the transportation investments that have to go there, in a way that supports the growth of our economy, maintains an environment that is healthy and productive for generations, and also that reduces the disparities that we see across different groups of populations in the region by race, ethnicity, income, ability. So we're really trying to plan for a future for all. Tall order that, that we are being asked to all engage in in this plan. Moving past my house here. So when we talk about the transportation aspects of this plan, it's the key thing that we do in the plan. What might the triple bottom line look like? What might it look like for a plan to make prioritized transportation investments that are good for the economy, equity, and environment? Or another way that people talk about it is people, planet, profit. So it could mean that we look at areas where you've got some existing safety issues in transportation. It could be looking at the areas that are parts of your roadway infrastructure that are way, way out of disrepair and really needing maintenance. It could be, you know, looking at how do we support in Sutter County the agricultural economy that you have here while balancing it with the needs of the urban parts of the county, right? Like, how do you route traffic for all of the different goods movement that needs to happen so that it's supportive of all that? And investing in that, right? Investing in that so that it can benefit all of the different people who live here. And ultimately, trying to reduce the disparities. So where people have challenges getting to places to meet their daily needs, figuring out what those are and trying to close that gap. And we're trying to figure out how to set some regional policies to invest so that at the local level, you can close those gaps, right? You can use this to really implement your visions. So the way we're going to try to do this, we're starting off with creating some pathways. We're going to look at how much growth is projected to be in the region. We're looking out to the year 2050. We're going to try to create three different futures where if all of those people and those jobs in their homes, they, they get land on the ground across the region in different ways. You know, one pathway, it's really expanding the urban footprint broadly out, and, and moving all the way to the third pathway that's looking at how do we, how do we accommodate as much of that growth as possible within existing communities? And the reason we're doing that is we're trying to look at, one, what kinds of transportation investments would be needed to support that? And two, what are the implications for people's ability to get around, to get to their daily needs? What are the implications for air quality, for public health, for agriculture, for housing choice? So we are going to create these pathways and develop a whole bunch of impacts, and then we're going to try to translate those into values that we can have conversations in communities. And so to give you a quick look at how we are thinking about these pathways, this is a map of the region, and in the dark blue areas, these are all the existing urban areas in the region. The light blue areas are all areas where there is, in local plans, there's the potential for future growth. So in the first pathway, that's the most expansive in terms of covering the most new land. Forty percent of new growth is getting accommodated in existing communities, and the 60% of it is through expanding out into, into new land. In the second pathway, 67% of the growth is being accommodated within existing communities, and then the balance of it is through expansion. And then the third pathway, that's where we're seeing, okay, if you accommodate the most amount of growth, 90% within existing communities, 10% expanding, what happens there? And this is going to look different. This is, these are regional numbers. So within any given community, it's not going to necessarily look exactly like that. Like in Sutter County, you are an agricultural county, you have very limited areas where you see growth, so there might not be a lot of variation between these pathways. But on the regional level, remember, when we look at what every city and county is putting together, there are implications. And so that's where we are, see as an opportunity for us to all study together. And then what we're going to do with that, as I said, we want to take all of the potential impacts of those three different pathways and translate those into values conversations that we want to take out to all of the communities in the region. We have lots of different tactics for engaging. We want to be, and this is like an ask that we're setting to you now, so start thinking about it, and we'll, we'll reach back out. But we want to ask you, what are the community events that you're going to be having that we could come to and have a pop up workshop at? Just a tabling to have these conversations with people, have people weigh in on all of the different pathways that we're talking about. The other thing that we're looking for from you is what are community-based organizations that work within your community that might have clients that we could work with those community-based organizations to try to work through them to get some input, really, you know, get, maximize the input that we can get from, from your community members? And then we're also looking at, in addition to yourselves as community leaders, are there other leaders in the community that we should be reaching out to, again, to try to extend the word that, hey, we're having this regional conversation, we would love to get your input on that. So the timing of all of this, we are doing a tour of the region right now, going to every city council and every board of supervisors to talk about this. We want to start our outreach with those pathways, talking about these different, different implications of the future in 2023. And then that's going to lead to the, the definition of a, we're calling it preferred pathway, but it'll actually be the final plan where we say, okay, here's what the growth is going to look like, here's what our budget is for transportation investments, here's what all the transportation projects are, here are our policies for how we're going to implement it all. That's all going to get created and then adopted in 2024. So what does adoption of this plan look like? Well, once we adopt, we implement. You in Sutter County, you're implementing your local general plan and policy. So that's one way it's happening. The second is that you're implementing it at SACOG through all of the projects and programs that SACOG undertakes and does every day, every year. And what I'd like to do is just give you an example of some of those programs so that you have a sense of what this, you know, big vision plan actually translates to, into on a more day-to-day basis. So one of the things, the programs that we have going on is our Engage and Power Implement Program. This actually came out of both our last long-range plan, as well as the board undertaking an effort to create a racial equity action plan. The Engage and Power Implement Program is a funding program. It funds planning efforts for local governments to work with community members. So it's really for community members to co-create with their local government solutions to any challenges or needs that they have identified. It's the first time we're developing the program, and we are really excited to do it. We're trying to ultimately hope there will be a pipeline of projects that comes out of it that have been created by community and ultimately helps to make our local governments competitive for the state and federal grant funding that's coming down the pipe, that's really demanding that there is equity considerations and community, robust community involvement in those projects. Another program that we are really excited about, in part, this, this came out of our last plan as well, and it also really involved all of the local governments in the Sacramento region advocating for this at the state legislature. This is the Green Means Go program. It's a grant program to fund investment in infrastructure for infill. So housing development that happens within existing communities where there are green zones identified. This map needs to be updated because Sutter County now has a green zone. But it is focusing on the funding for water, sewer, drainage, all of that type of infrastructure in these areas. Another implementation effort that we have, and this came out of our last regional plan, and it's also something that we have been talking with our neighboring regions about. It's the mega-region working group. And so we have board members from SACOG and board members from the, our Bay Area equivalent, which is the Metropolitan Transportation Commission, and our San Joaquin Valley neighbor, the San Joaquin Council of Government. They have been meeting about three times a year to try to identify how we can, across our regions, work together to have coordinated advocacy, go after coordinated funding for transportation projects that are supportive of the entire Northern California mega-region. Because we acknowledge that our economies in these three regions are getting more and more tied to each other. And so how do we keep those economies strong and growing? It's by being strategic about the transportation investments that we make there. And so the map that I'm showing you here shows 12 projects that were identified from each region's long-range plan that were seen to have some significance beyond their own region. So they're mega-regional projects. And in the Sacramento region, the ones that you see up on the, on the map here, oh, there we go. We have this green one, which is the extension of the Capitol Corridor. It's a third track for that train service from Sacramento to Roseville. We have this pink line here, which is an I-5 managed lanes project. So it's going to have some additional capacity there on that interstate. And then we have the Yolo I-80 managed lanes project that is basically going across the causeway. And then we have this orange line here, it's the Valley Rail Ace or Altamont Corridor Express train services extending up from the San Joaquin Valley into the Sacramento region. And this one, it's stopping just in Natomas, but I believe there are plans for this to go as far as Chico at some point into the future. Another project that has come out of our last plan is the Regional Trails Plan. This is, this was just adopted by our board this year. It is a vision to have every community in the region connected by a trail so you can walk, bike, or roll, if you wanted to, all across the region for health, for, for just getting around, for recreation. And there's a lot of excitement about that, I think everywhere we talk about that. Just a couple more here. Our path forward is a prosperity strategy that, again, also came out of our last long-range plan with really an emphasis on how can we support the economic growth of our region. This was undertaken by SACOG in partnership with the Greater Sacramento Economic Council, the Metro Chamber of Commerce, the Asian Pacific Chamber, and Valley Vision. Each of those organizations has a different role to play. So there are, some of those partners are really focused on, on what the workforce is needed. Some of that, some of it's focused on different, different locational investments. SACOG's role as the regional transportation planning agency is focused on what are the transportation investments needed. And it's really focused on three clusters in our region of how do we organize ourselves to support the big wealth builders in our region. So the clusters are food and agriculture, which I think is going to be really, I think, of interest to Sutter County, health and life sciences, and then transportation mobility, innovative mobility specifically. So in this, this one, one way to think about this in Sutter County is you, Sutter County produces a significant amount of the export, you know, crop of our region. And so what are the transportation and just all infrastructure, right? Like, let's include broadband in there. But what is the transport, what is the infrastructure that's needed to make sure that that agricultural economy is strong and is like, you know, supported? Like, we put a lot of investment into our urban economy, right? Into the buildings there, into the stores and the offices and all of that. But the interest also is in supporting our rural economy as well. Like, how can we align and do that regionally? And then lastly, thank you so much for your patience here, but you did, this is, I believe, the only item on here, so I'm taking the privilege to talk through it. Lastly, we can't talk about the future without talking about our Youth Leadership Academy. This is a program for high school students. We actually are, we have a call for applications right now. It's a program where we take high school students from across the region, and we teach them about local government, we teach them about regional government, we show them how they can get civically engaged in their communities. The idea being that someday, maybe they will want to sit in one of your seats, maybe they'll sit at the SACOG board. But we want to get them engaged because at the end of the day, when we're talking about long-range planning, we're talking about their future. And so I wanted to make sure to end on that note, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you very much. Awesome presentation. And we're going to open up for public comment, and I have a speaker card here for Diane Jaeger.
Good afternoon, members. I just kind of comment on this. There's one, one thing that you brought up is a possible extension of rail going north towards Chico. I would like to pass on just a thought, an idea, because you're talking about growth in our area. That growth is very much restricted because of FEMA. If there were a secondary line, an elevated rail that would go north and go through an area, we would then open up probably 60% of our county to be able to be developed, because it would have, be a secondary buffer for any flooding off the levee. It doesn't have to be that high, because most of the county is only a one or two foot. So even if you had a 10-foot elevation, that that would, and it would also do one other thing. When my mother was, who has passed away many years ago, but when she was, when it was in the 30s, there was actually rail from Calusa to Ubusutter, to Yuba City, and to Sacramento that was a commuter. And we have over 20,000, 20,000 to 25,000 people commute out of our county. If there were a way that they would use, you'd have, a lot of things would be solved by using, you'd have rail that would bring people, there's a lot of people that commute in and to Calusa or from Calusa here. That would really take a lot of vehicles off the road. It would make it safer for our trucking. It would give people from Chico a way to commute also by rail, and it would eliminate possibility, a lot of our problem with the FEMA development restrictions. possibility, a lot of our problem with the FEMA development restrictions.
Thank you. And I should note, I have two of my Secog colleagues here. Any comments that you're making, Hannah Chudin is taking down so that we can bring those back, including if you have any asks that we can't answer. And then Sam Shelton is here from my transportation team to answer all of your really hard questions.
All right. Well, thank you very much. We're going to close the public comment, and we're going to bring it back to the board for discussion. I would like to talk about trails. All right. So we'll start out with Yuba City to Sutter to Colusa. About, had this idea now for about the last few months, and I've worked with a few constituents, and we started talking to some of the landowners along the corridor. So Diane Jager brought up the point about member from Yuba City to Sutter to Colusa Railroad. So when the railroad went bye-bye, so did the pieces of the land that was owned by the railroad. Either the north owner bought the property or the south side owner bought the property. And memory serves, I think it's about a hundred feet total width of those properties. But I do know a few of the landowners, my family included, that would give an easement for some sort of passage. You see, we just need a trail that goes east and west. If it jogs a little to the south or to the north, that's one thing, but as long as it gets to the next point. So we've talked, Neil and I have been talking about this too, because we have the old concrete bridge there at the end of South Beach Road. And I didn't even realize that that was actually knocked down by Caltrans, that small section. It wasn't that it fell down. So is there funding for, if we can get the landowners to give some sort of, let's say, an eight-foot easement along one side of the property, you know, just enough for a trail, and where you have some sort of a path, and then we get to the old concrete bridge? I believe it's about two hundred feet of it or a hundred feet of it's knocked down? I mean, yeah, we're going to need some sort of help to.
Yeah, to fund.
To fund, to replace the portion that is not there anymore, have the testing done to make sure that it is capable of holding the weight. But that is something, like I said, my constituents and along, not just mine, but you know, even Yuba City and Colusa, they'd love to see something like that. That'd be huge. That is a trail. It is for walking, biking, or I've even seen people with horses going up and down the trail. So that's something. And then the other thing is, I'm curious if your group would help out looking into the state property in the Buttes that is the state park that has no access to. Because to me, it would make sense to more or less convince the state, and why don't you sell that property and buy another piece of property that actually has access, the public has access to, and make that your park? Because once again, now we're still talking about trails. You know, we're talking about trails that, the bike trail hits Acacia Avenue, and people ride their bikes down the bike lane that the county put in, I think probably about twenty years ago, down Acacia. And then they get onto Pass Road, and they're still riding on Pass Road, and they could get onto some other trails. But like I said, it's, I've had a lot of questions on that, on, you know, the state BISIS Park that is landlocked, that you cannot get in. I guess there's only so many permits a year to allow hikes and so forth. But it just, it just didn't make any sense for them to buy a piece of ground that's landlocked. You'd think that they'd sell that, buy another piece that has that public access to be able to have the public go and enjoy some sort of trail. So that was, that's what I wanted to bring up. Yes?
So also, we are working on a project, Feather River Parkway project, which will be on the Feather River, and it has bike trails, and we're doing that through the, we're trying to get a grant through the National Parks Service to do that. And that would go about from Yuba City's existing Parkway all the way down to Shanghai Bend roughly, and a little further. And I know that the state has plans to do it all the way down to Riverfront Park. And that would be a wonderful tie-in for the community to be able to ride their bikes all the way to Sacramento. And not be on, not be on a public road, but be on a bike trail.
That's great. I feel like we might want to, if you'd be willing, come back at some point and talk about the trails plan in particular, because this is really, really great to hear. And what I want is, I wish I had our trails lead here who actually has them, has been working with your staff to develop this trails plan so that we could talk.
No, that sounds like a plan. I mean, you know, we were at RCRC last month, and I didn't realize, you know, over $207 billion is spent on trails a year. A hundred and sixty-seven billion on camping, two hundred and seven billion on trails. That's throughout the whole United States. And how much of that spent here? Probably next to none. So we have a lot to offer here. And I think it behooves to, like I said, you know, we've got Supervisor Baines as part, him and I, you know, Supervisor Baines and I have talked, you know, with his dad's passing, he couldn't make RCRC. And, but it was a pretty awesome presentation to hear about the, what is it? I'm trying to think, the lost trails up there, they're talking about up there in Sierra, Sierra Ville, going through, yeah. Really neat. And like I said, that'd be something that we'd like to see here in this county. And going back to transportation, you know, we have, we have a lot of ag trucks here, and, which is really awesome, but most of the ag trucks are taking their commodity outside of the county, which means they're also pulverizing the roads. And it would be nice to get a little more money from the state in helping take care of those roads. You know, especially, you know, what we should do is we should do what Amazon's doing, you know, where's that dirt coming from? You know, like Amazon, their packages are coming from Sec, you know, from their departments. So, but once again, you know, you look at all the dirt and everything that's rolling out of the county, rolling out of the other different jurisdictions, and not just, we're talking from your rice, your prunes, you know, and so forth, and just be nice to help get a little more money to help, you know, patch up these roads.
To the chair.
Yes, sir.
Casey, guys, I want to thank you for an amazing presentation. I guess Neil's here in the audience, and I'd request that he reaches out to the city to see if we can work together on some of these Green Means Go funds, because that's what we're lacking here in Sutter County, and most importantly, in the city of Yuba City, is infrastructure. So we can't attract anybody. I mean, there's a, you know, a lot of talks of, we want to bring these grand, we have these grand ideas and want to bring some retail to our community, but, you know, it's one of those chicken and the egg thing, that we have to have the infrastructure in order to attract them. But, so I would ask, you know, request Neil to reach out to the city and see if they could write something together. And also, we're talking about transportation, you know, there was a project before that the city was working on with a third bridge, and that went away because of lack of funding. There's a huge need here when we're talking about the agricultural side and trucking our produce to market and opening up avenues and with, you know, just opening up another opportunity to get on the other side of the river. And again, I would, you know, request staff to reach out and see if those things be brought, you know, brought back up. But again, I just want to thank Secog, you guys are doing amazing things in our six cities and, our six counties and twenty-two cities, and it is a true honor to serve and to be our representative there for Secog. Thank you for everything you do.
Through the chair.
Yes.
Thank you. Yeah, I want to thank you as well. Thank you for coming up here and for your presentation. Had a quick question, and, you know, you were talking about supporting agriculture, both the ag economy and maybe future ag development and industrial. As Diane Jager mentioned, because of the FEMA flood maps, we're really hemmed in and really handcuffed as far as economic growth here. And so seventy percent of our landmass falls within a FEMA flood map, another eleven percent is the Sutter Buttes that you can't develop. So really, we only have twenty percent of what we can really develop, which is unfortunate for us. And so I guess I was just wondering, because we've been in discussions with Subufka, DWR, we have a real problem with our Sutter bypass levee on the west side of the county that really needs a slurry wall before we can reduce those FEMA flood maps. And so I guess my question would be, and the reason I'm asking this is because we can't build anything. And if a structure burns down, whether it's your home, your business, you're not allowed to rebuild it. So really frustrating for us that the federal government puts these restrictions on us, but we're reliant on the state for some sort of remedy. And I just wonder, would your funds qualify for something like that? Because it would help our development. And Neil or Steve, correct me if I'm wrong, but Subufka, I think it was somewhere between seventy or eighty million dollars to do that entire stretch with the slurry wall? Do you remember, Neil?
I think it's about ten million per mile. I don't recall how many miles the bypass levee is.
Depending on how deep you had to go, though, was the issue.
Yeah.
But anyways, just wondering if the funds would qualify for something like that?
Yeah, it's a very good question. This is, and you're referring to the Green Means Go program that I had up on the screen. The Green Means Go program is very specifically focused on infill areas within existing communities that locally, they are already identified in the local plan for housing or infill housing development. And they are an area where both either today or in the future, they would be lowering the amount of vehicle miles traveled that people are taking. So it doesn't sound like it's going to work for that because it has to be, you're talking about the west side of the county, so this is truly like the bypass, yeah, it's like big infrastructure. It doesn't work for that one. When I talk about the drainage, it's about like, you know, a development site that's surrounded by existing development.
Excuse me, but what about commercial?
It, commercial, as long as it is part of a residential development. And this is in part because of the funding that we have for this, that the state funding is focused on accelerating infill residential development in areas where we will be lowering vehicle miles traveled. It's very specifically tied to that. Now, that said, Secog has other funding programs. It's the one that we do every two years, and those are for transportation projects. They have to be consistent with our plan. There are a number of programs for that. And so that can be tied to any type of development that is aligned with the plan.
All right. If there's no other questions, we will thank you again for spending the last forty-five minutes with us, or thirty-five minutes. We appreciate you and appreciate you driving out here. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We will close the study session if there's no other comment.
Yubasutter.live's local government live streams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske Truck Rentals. Skip's Marysville Music Cafe with lessons in person and personalized, instruments including guitars and amps, horns, strings, strings for instruments, and a myriad of music and sound equipment. Skip's Marysville Music Cafe.